We going hot?
Ready.
All right.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call the reorganizational meeting to order. And my first order of business will be to administer the oath of office to the newly elected and re-elected board members, which includes Miranda McDonald, Kevin Charles, and Marilyn Lewis. So if you will answer in the affirmative, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education trustee according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Okay. And I will bring this around for everybody to sign with. Sign right there. Now, I want to see if you can sign right there. Thank you. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
And now, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I will call for nominations for Board of Education presidents. Do you want me to have a nomination, please?
I nominate Miranda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We don't need a second for that.
Okay.
And if that's all the nominations, let me just put this on here. And may we take a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that everyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to put a second. It won't let me to make the vote. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Williams? If you would answer affirmatively, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education president according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. Please open up your hands. Just keep it signed right there. Thank you. You're welcome. And I do give you an update right here. I'm gonna have to do two. Okay. We're at 2E. Do we have a nomination for Vice President for Board of Education?
I'm happy with Kevin.
Okay. And you do need a second.
I do, in order to cross.
If somebody else is interested, that's fine with me, too. But either way, I don't care.
I'd love to.
I'd love to nominate Braden.
You're asking? It's up to you.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Well, we'll take a vote on each unless, Kevin, you're passing.
I'll pass.
You'll pass?
Make it simple and clean.
So then, that's Braden?
Thank you, sir.
And do you need a second?
I do.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Post? One second. And did you both abstain from your votes, from these votes? Or did you vote positively? Voted positively. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Dutcher, give you one minute. Actually, it's a new one. We'll update. All right. Mr. Dutcher, if you'll answer affirmatively.
I'll do it.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education vice president according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Right. Sign right there.
Thank you very much.
Let me know when you're ready, please. Yes, I'm ready. All right. Only because I marked, highlighted some areas, I'm gonna kind of flip it twice. All right. Number three, we are at the reorg organizational meeting for the consent agenda. I won't read through all of these. You have all your appointments unless there's a question on any of them. But we have the reorg 2019-20 appointments. We have the designations for the bank depository, the newspaper, and the official printer. We have 3D authorizations. And 3E, president to sign legal documents and annual reports. We have 3F credit cards. And I believe the only thing that changed last year from the credit cards was the Voyager name carried out to Global.
Right.
Is that correct?
Name change.
All right. 3G, standard workday resolution. And then, 3H, the committees for the 2019-20. And don't believe there's any changes other than administrative name changes there.
There were a few changes to the Health Advisory Council, which was the Wellness Committee.
That's right. All right. And then, 3I, fees, rates, and bonding. There isn't nothing there from last year. And then, 3J, petty cash funds. 3K, extenuating circumstances. L, impartial hearing officer. Correct, or 3M, correcting and refunding erroneous taxes. N, 403B designate. O, CSE and CPSE committees. I do believe there was a new parent name on that one.
So you updated the parent name mid-year.
Okay. So Dawn Mack and Anna Hitt on that.
Right.
All right. So do we have any questions on?
I have a question.
Sure.
We had talked and talked about our official newspaper. Do we want to go with the only on a star? We don't get very positive coverage from the reporter.
So do we want to eliminate the reporter altogether, or do we want to add the Daily Star?
I guess my question would be, do we have? I mean, we would need some numbers around distribution locally because that's really the important element of it, is to make sure that we are reaching and connecting with the individuals in our district, the stakeholders of who we serve. So, I mean, I'll certainly agree that there seems to be certain, you know, there are kind of misrepresentations, but, you know, just elements that may have been misrepresented. But, you know, again, if they are the paper that does get the largest local distribution, then I think we have to keep them. I would think about adding the Daily Star in addition, but I wouldn't get rid of the reporter, I don't think.
There may also be a cost difference for legal ads and advertisements.
So we can, so we'll look into that and see what that might be, and then we could always add them.
Okay. Circulation costs, then?
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody good with that? And we'll find out what the cost might be for legal ads and the distribution throughout our area.
So we're just tabling that particular?
We'll leave it as is for now.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Is there a source out there that would tell us if there was any other publication that we're not thinking of that would have bigger circulation in our area?
The only, the only one, like we do from our district standpoint, is Cat'skill News, just to cover all of Delaware County. So we do Cat'skill News, Daily Star, and Reporter, three, just to make sure you cover the county. There's also, out of deposit. Courier? I don't know. Courier. But, you know.
Then we're getting, we're really getting into the fringe of our district, and we're touching on those areas.
Right. I just didn't know if there was a one-stop shop that would give us the information we're looking for.
Yeah. I mean, the readership, the readership demographic details, things like that, as to...
The reporter and the Daily Star would give it large.
Right.
That's a broad coverage.
For our area here, right.
Does that obligate you to put legals in both, if you designate both?
Very well.
No.
Okay. So we'll, yeah, we'll look into that and see, yeah, what the cost of the legals ad, ads could be. You know, they're quite lanky at times. The tax, I'm just thinking the tax one, and the budget, but, you know, so they're a lot, they're large. So, all right. So if we could look into that and then bring that information back. Are there any other questions on any of the committees, rates, fees? I believe all the fees and everything's stated. If not, do we have a motion to approve the reorg consent agenda?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Here. All right. And then, I believe, we are up to adjourn the reorg meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. And I will call the regular meeting to order. I'm sorry. I just, I knew I had highlighted different areas, and I just wanted to draw attention to it, so I'm trying to catch track of them. All right. We have the approval of the CSE and CPSE recommendations. Miranda, this is something that, if you have any questions about that report, because of the content in it, and because it's a student matter, we would table that, take it into executive session, and then, you know, ask the questions. But if there are no questions, then we can prove it as is. So I usually ask if there's any questions. If not...
I've looked at it. I'm good.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion to approve the CSE and CPSE recommendations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. And I will call the regular meeting to order. I'm sorry. I just, I knew I had highlighted different areas, and I just wanted to draw attention to it, so I'm trying to catch track of them. All right. We have the approval of the CSE and CPSE recommendations. Miranda, this is something that, if you have any questions about that report, because of the content in it, and because it's a student matter, we would table that, take it into executive session, and then, you know, ask the questions. But if there are no questions, then we can prove it as is. So I usually ask if there's any questions. If not...
I've looked at it. I'm good.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion to approve the CSE and CPSE recommendations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. All right. Discussion items. Mr. Thomas would like to attend the NISBA Summer Law Conference in Binghamton on July 17th. Is there anyone else that would like to attend that?
What were the topics, again?
I know the one that you want to see is the AARP.
Yeah. APVR. We've got a lot of big names. APVR.
And unfortunately, I just got one of those in the mail. Oh, here you go. All right. So... All right. Protecting digital student records and responding to data breaches. The APPR. A year in review, part two, new court cases and other rulings. And then, how to properly handle employee mental health and substance abuse. And then, there's another, effective running school board meetings in compliance with Roberts Rule of Order.
During the day, or is it...
Yes.
Except for double training.
Eight to about 3:30. And Cory, when do you have to have? Is there a deadline on that?
No. I think if you'd like to go to the 17th session, though, we'd need to know pretty soon. There are other sessions.
And they also offer this at the conference in October. And I think it's pretty much run along the same line.
My experience is that it's very, very similar. I'm really interested in this one because of the changes in the APPR, and we're going to have to probably talk to the WTA about some changes, hopefully get those resolved before the beginning of the school year. So I just wanted to be up to snuff. And, I mean, I'll participate in the whole thing, but I really want to hear what's going on with that. That's my main motivation for really wanting to be there for this during the summer. Otherwise, I'd probably wait until school boards, if it was me.
All right. So if you do decide to go to the July 17th, just like by tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. And the New York State School Boards Conference will be held October 24th through the 26th. That is going to be in Rochester, Thursday through a Saturday. So we need to know who's going on that. Cory, I would like to attend.
Cory, I would too, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? I think it's a good one.
I believe so.
I'll have to check.
Okay.
I don't think I'm going to be available.
Okay. All right. And actually, that opens up, registration for that is this week?
Very soon.
Or the end of this week?
Tea?
Oh, okay. So we've got a little bit. And once you, once it opens up, the hotel rooms are gone quite quickly. So we want to register.
We have to do it right away.
Yep.
As soon as possible.
All right. Advisory committees. Miranda, this is up to you. Which committees would you be interested in?
I would like to do the facilities and the curriculum, please.
The only thing I would ask is nobody touch policy.
Right.
You know what? Are you sure?
I'm a masochist, but I want to crank...
We're three quarters through.
You got three of ya on there. We don't want to lose any of you.
Three quarters through. What do you read your list tonight?
Arnie, was there anything you were interested in?
Oh, I did curriculum last year. I can maybe do the finance this year or something, if you're lacking one. Yeah?
Finance is usually the president, vice president, and Paul has been on that committee.
But you're welcome to stay on curriculum. I just didn't say you're...
Yeah. Finance was just Rhonda and me. Audit was typically Rhonda and Kevin. And then, I stepped onto that last year. Wasn't able to participate, but...
Why are you staying on curriculum? I don't care. Doesn't really matter.
Curriculum, yeah.
Would you like to move to finance?
Yeah.
Okay.
He said finance. He said finance.
We'll give it a whirl.
Bring him in.
I heard you, but I didn't hear Arnie's voice.
Paul got my back.
Did you want to stay on both?
Careful of that.
Did you want to stay on both?
Nah, I better do just one.
Okay.
I'll be plenty.
All right. So there will be a facilities committee meeting scheduled for July 18th at 5:00 PM. And then, there are only a few policies in Policy Section 7000, which pertain to facilities. And that will just be sent by email.
Actually, the 7000s, Mr. Thomas will bring that to the facilities committee to look at first.
Yeah, there's only like five or six of them. So I thought maybe we'd take a quick look at them while we're at the meeting.
Okay. All right. Is there any other items for discussion?
It's you and I, Galen. Thank you, Cory.
Okay. Whoops. Sorry. All right. We are up to 7A, public comment. Would anyone like public comment? Right. Regular committee consent agenda.
Now, I mean, he's a man, she is.
All right. We have the financial reports. I had a couple of questions, it seemed, for the financial reports. May I get back to you very quickly on them? So I appreciate that. Matter of understanding the extra classroom balance. We have the transfer of funds. We have the award milk bid to Instant Whip. The award ice cream bid to Hershey's Creamery Company. Approval of the free and reduced price policy information, now for the 1920 school year. Approve of per dam part-time typist for Pamela Brzee. And that is per dam part-time typist at School Bus Garage for the 1920 school year at a rate of 12.34 an hour. Personnel resignation, retirements. We have Lindsey Johnson teacher, Danielle Seiler teacher, and Linda Whitaker part-time cashier. Personal emergency appointment, Teresa Boland, this will be for a K through five specials chairperson. This is retroactive.
To the 2018-19.
1819.
Par.
We have the appointments for the summertime, part-time custodial help, substitute summer custodial help, summer clerical helper, summer, summer school substitute teacher aide, grade chairs for the 1920 school year, volunteer co-curricular advisors, gay straight alliance co-advisors, and FFA assistant advisor. Mentor effective July 1st, 2018, substitute school monit, or I'm sorry, July 1st, 2018, Tracy Wood, substitute school monitor Veronica Tomlin, and substitute school monitor Billy Joe Klein. And we have, that's it? Yes. All right. Do we have a motion? Or are there any questions, I should say, on the consent?
I think I have to abstain from a couple of them.
No.
You don't have to.
Nope. If there's no questions, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. 9B, accept donations. We have one old-school Kindle reader from Maxine Locker to the elementary school library, and one Kindle buyer from Maxine Locker to the Townsend Elementary School library. Very nice. Do we have a motion to accept those donations?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Approval of the biannual review for the district shared decision-making. Do we have any questions on that? Do we have a motion?
School related apparel organizations? We just have three? Or is that just three reps?
Um...
There's Jen, right?
There was three at that meeting when we signed that. I don't know as if...
We were missing one.
What, yeah?
I had four in my head that...
We were missing one at that meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
And what we, and just for some background information, I mean, we, apparently, this was not done in recent, last year, I don't think it was done last year.
Correct.
And so, we started meeting this year. We had some, a couple of pretty good meetings, and then we did trail off. We got involved in some other pieces, whether it be weather-related or search-related, employee issues and things of that sort. So we did trail off a little bit, but we did meet, as you can see here, we sort of did a recap on the year, and we decided as a group, want a good time to meet, starting in September would be, and I think we're like the third Thursday or something in September, or something like that, Cory. I can't remember exactly. But we did set up a regular set of meetings. There's still some, you know, concern with the notion that, it's called a shared decision-making committee, but you guys actually make the decisions. And so, you know, there's always some conversation that goes on about that. And, and the rest of the pieces, I think are, I think the whole piece here is, is very honest, you know, as far as involvement of all the parties, you know, they felt that there was minimal implementation. We, and one of the reasons for that is, we did try to get some students on the group like we should have, and we didn't, we weren't successful in doing that this past year. So we're going to work on that again for the coming year and try to get some students. But, you know, folks felt that because of that, that we shouldn't necessarily get the high score on the grid, but we should step it back a little bit. So I think everybody was very honest, and we, you know, we took a look at it, and it becomes a baseline for us for next year.
Do they present formal recommendations?
They can.
I haven't seen one.
Yeah. We, we had a couple of issues that we talked about that we, that we did have some traction with. I mean, there was a lot of conversation about students being dropped off in the morning out front, and what are some ways that we can deal with that? And to be honest, we took a lot of the suggestions. We didn't necessarily do exactly everything everybody on the group necessarily would have liked to have seen, because some things you can't, and some things just didn't work out. And, but we did make some modifications on the way we do drop-offs in the morning, and that was largely, you know, because of their bringing it to the, to the table, which I thought was a great thing. There was some conversation about doing some recycling programs, especially at Townsend. And there was some limited success with that, but I did want to get some of the folks who were involved in that to come and do a report, and because of our not-so-regular meeting schedule, we really weren't able to make that happen either. So we know that there were some, there were some things that were going on down there, maybe not as effective as we wanted. But that, those were two items that I can say right away, that were brought to this table, that they had, that they had concerns about. And, and we've had some in-depth conversations, especially at the last meeting, we had some in-depth conversations about our testing program, scoring, and things of that sort, too. So, you know, some meaningful stuff, but we, we just, we treaded water a little bit, and we'll be a little more effective next year, I hope. But it's a great baseline. Gives us a place to go.
It was nice to see a lot of the people making, you know, all the meetings that they could make, so. It stayed a full table all the time.
It was. Good.
So would the title of shared decision-making, would it be more appropriate to change the title to like advisory or something of that nature?
In reality, it is an advisory group, and, but, you know, the term shared decision-making comes down from the state. And, you know, it is what it is.
I just was trying to take some of the sting out of people, that if they're getting a little bit, if they don't have the flower word out.
Personally, I'd love if they did, because it becomes a stigma for us at the table, becomes a problem, you know? It gets in the way sometimes...
Right.
...of doing some really good things, but we'll get over it. We'll get through it. We'll get an understanding of what we're doing.
Loving you.
Be better.
All right. Do we have approval for the biannual review for the district shared decision-making?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Next, we are up to authorize design service proposal. This is from the BCA Architects in Engineering for the design service at Townsend Elementary School, and this will be for the flood mitigation. Does anybody have any questions on that? Braden, do you have anything to add to that? We're still...
If anybody has any questions on that, I can definitely get them up to speed with it. But this is the actual proposal from our on-staff architects to do the actual design for the flood mitigation project. If you look in there closely, the timelines and the deadlines for when they want to have things done are very well laid out, and that timeframe, we're going to try to keep to as And that timeframe, we're going to try to keep to as close as possible. So, well underway. And looking forward to seeing the full design so that we can go out and try to beat the bushes for more grants. Period. Try to get this thing implemented, so. Good turnaround time.
Do we have a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion.
Or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Emergency appointment and approvals. All right. So, we have the Arthur Lomas for High School Building Leader as a teacher on special assignment and as well as summer school administrator. And that will be to receive a per diem rate of 280 for the duties related to those assignments. We have Justin Preston be appointed as athletic director for the 1920 school year. And he will receive a stipend for 17,500. Tara Sackett, appointed as CSC chairperson as a teacher on special assignment. And that for related duties will have a stipend of 10,000. And as well as Tara Sackett, be appointed a summer CSC chairperson for up to 20 summer days. Do we have, or are there any questions? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Probationary teacher appointments. Elizabeth Ogden for the elementary school. And Deborah Cannon for special education. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we are up to G, athletic recommendations. I had a question on this. I'd like to pull this and discuss that in executive session. Is that all right? All right. Approval of the 1920 contracts and amendments. Are there any questions on that? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Corey, I will abstain from that one. All right. Approval of the 1920 stipends. This is for the chemical hygiene officer, the K through 12 librarian, supervising speech therapist, district regisarch, playground supervisor, elementary newsletter coordinator and safety officer stipends.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. And we are up to 10A personal appointments. This is for Amanda Hoover. This is for a correction to her June 18th appointment. Her starting date will actually be July 15th. That's a correction to that. Do we have a motion to approve that change? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. We are up to number 11, adopt policy, second reading. Paul, would you do the honors?
And thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Number 0115, sexual harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. Number 1120, school district records. 4,000 student learning standards and instructional guidelines. 4010, equivalence in instructional staff and materials. 4200, curriculum management. 4200E, curriculum management exhibit. 4311.1, display of the flag. 4315.1, AIDS instruction. 4321, program for students with disabilities under the idea and New York Education Law Article 89, number 4321.1, provision of special education services in the least restrictive environment. 4321.2, school-wide pre-referral approaches and interventions. 4321.3, allocation of space for special education programs. 4321.4, independent education evaluation. 4321.5, confidentiality and access to IEP's individualized education services programs and service plans. 4321.6, availability of alternative format instructional materials for students with disabilities. 4321.7, district-wide and statewide assessments of students with disabilities. 4321.8, impartial hearing officer appointment and compensation. 4321.9, declassification of students with disabilities. 4321.10, point 10, programs and services for paternally or parentally placed, non-public school students with disabilities. 4321.11, public report on revisions to district policies, practices and procedures upon a finding of significant disproportionality. 4321.12, use of timeout rooms and physical restraints. 4321.13, preschool education, preschool special education. 4321.14, special education personnel. 4325, academic intervention services. 4325E, academic intervention services exhibit. 4326, programs for English language learners. 4326E.1, programs for English, English language learners. Parental notification exhibit. 4326E.2, programs for English language learners, parent response form exhibit. 4327, homebound instruction. 4430, student schedules and course loads. 4511, textbook selection and adoption. 4513, library material selection. 4526, student use of computerized information resources, acceptable use policy. 4526E, acceptable use policy, independent user application for computer usage exhibit. 4526.1, internet safety. 4531, field trips and excursions. 4532, school volunteers. 4532E.1, school volunteer application and agreement. 4532E.2, field trip chaperone guidelines for parent guardians exhibit. 4600, counseling and guidance programs. 4710, grading systems. 4730, homework. 4740, academic recognition. 4750, promotion, retention and acceleration of students. 4770, graduation requirements. 4771, early graduation. 4771E, early graduation exhibit. 4773, diploma and credential options for students with disabilities. 4810, teaching about controversial issues. And 4850, in-ones in the schools and on school property.
Thank you. All right. We are second reading. Do we have a motion to accept that?
We'll make it.
Who said?
I.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are up to 12A superintendent remarks.
So, not a lot of remarks. And obviously, I didn't bring anybody with me tonight. So, just to say that the cleaning crew has started. And I did a walkthrough of both campuses yesterday. And several of the rooms have been drained, as they say. And floors have been done. And it looks like they're moving right along at the clip that they had hoped to. We do have to get some things done in time because we've got, or by a certain time because we've got summer school groups coming in and things of that sort. So, they're right at it. And as I say, it seems as though things are moving along according to plan. My administrative team, we have set up some bi-weekly meetings. I do have a weekly mentoring meeting. And then, in addition to that, I've also set up bi-weekly meetings. The mentoring meetings are really about their professional growth and issues that they have professionally and personally in the job. The focus of the bi-weekly meetings are more task-oriented. What are the things we need to get done this summer? And, you know, where are you with respect to those things? And what can we do to help you make sure that you can get them done? Or if there's a problem that perhaps you have with it, then how can we help you take care of that? And just by way of example, I, our first meeting was yesterday. And I asked them to specifically identify three things that they felt that they needed to get right at. And then, we added a couple more to that and added a couple more at the bottom as well. But you can just see some of the tasks that they've identified as some pieces that they need to get. And I agree with all of them that are there. And that's also to say that this is not an exhaustive list of things that they'll be working on. But they do consume a fair amount of time. And we all agree that as one of them drops off the list, we're going to add another one to it. And just keep on going. Get through as many of these things as we can. You can see Amanda has some items there. She has not joined us physically yet. But we've been in contact with each other email-wise. And she wanted to add to the list, even though she wasn't there at the meeting yesterday. So, I added her items in there to start. And then, we'll see where it goes from there. So, we're off and running as an administrative team. We've got a retreat coming up. And I just remind the board that we, it's, we had money left over in the school improvement grant that was actually earmarked earlier this year for administrative training. And with the upheaval in terms of people leaving us and coming in and that sort of thing, we really didn't get a chance to spend that, those funds. Those are state funds that come to us. And the fact of the matter is, if we don't spend them, we're going to lose them this year. So, we're, as I had mentioned to you, I think back in March, maybe, or February, we're putting together a retreat where the entire administrative team, now that it's whole, we can go, get away from campus and work on a number of projects and a number of important topics. One of the things that's important to me with putting together a new team is that, is that we all get some common understanding on some of the basics, some of the foundational pieces that help us run our district from day to day, from week to week. And this retreat's going to allow us to come to a common understanding so that what we don't have is that our new person at the, at Townsend is doing things substantially different than our new person at the high school. And then, those things are slightly maybe different from our new person at the middle school and that sort of thing. The idea is to get on, get on the same page. So, just, and I have promised you that it's going to be, we're working. It's a very, it's going to be strenuous. And Jane and I have put together an agenda of topics that we are working on. We do have one guest speaker coming in. We actually have Rick coming over to join us on one day to talk to us about digital ethics and how to deal, dealing with students and adults who may not be using the technology the way that we're expecting them to use it. And a couple of other topics as well. I've got Chris Wilkinson coming over at one afternoon to talk about some of the employer-employee relations issues that every administrator should be aware of. And supervisors as well. Because at least when Chris is there, I, and just as part of the day, I want to invite our supervisor, John and Tracy, to come over, too. Because the things that Chris is going to be talking about on that afternoon relate to civil service employees. And there are some similarities there that need to be looked at. And I'd like those folks to be on the same page, again, as everybody else. So, just for your information, here's our retreat program. And certainly, if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer those. But we're running from about nine o'clock in the morning until, it's going to be about nine o'clock at night. We finish up with a fireside chat. And I, it's part of that fire, well, we call it balcony banter. But we'll, but we'll, I'll be running those and tossing out some scenarios for folks. And we'll have some conversations about that. But also, you know, we're trying to be clear on, again, the APPR piece and the observations, which ties in with me wanting to go to that law conference for that piece, anyway. And, you know, we're just trying to get, we're trying to get uniform. And we want to be, we want to speak with a single administrative voice. And that's really a large part of the goal here. We're also involving them in, we want all of our administrators, I want all of our administrators to be comfortable enough to be able to stand in front of their staff and stand and deliver. They need to be able to talk to their staff. But not only just talk to their staff, they need to be able to model for their staff. They need to be instructional models. If you're looking for something in a classroom, if you're looking for a style, you're looking for a method, you're looking for effective method, then you probably ought to be able to display that as well and model that for staff. So, we're working on that a little bit as well with an eye towards the very first day of school in September. But also, we've got a couple of conference days that are set up on our master calendar in the coming year as well. And we would like our administrators to be an active part of that in either leading the charge, participating in some way, and so forth. So, it's, it's an ambitious agenda that we have there. But I want to let you know that we're working.
It's a lot here.
There is a lot there. There really is a lot there.
Yes.
O and M I talked about, so that's okay. And then, I have a brief executive section topic that I would like to talk to you about with respect to the employment of a particular individual.
And I seen on the website that we will be serving breakfast and lunch again at both schools.
Yes.
Starting Monday?
Yes.
So--
I should have mentioned that. I'm sorry, the, we are running that whole program as well.
I normally see the flag out there, which reminds me that it's going on, but I haven't seen it. So, probably, or the banner, too.
I'll have to, I'll give Patty a call and see what's--
Yeah, there's usually a banner that goes--
Is there one out here, too? Or is it just down there?
Yeah, usually down there. Down there, but I haven't seen them yet, so.
Good to know.
I just had one question on our, the dropping of the New York 44 Health.
Yep.
I had a retiree ask me today and provided me a letter, actually. It was written by John W. Pope, not on letterhead, not addressed to anyone specific. Looks like sour grapes.
Well, we are not totally out of the water with respect to the New York 44 yet. We are still in conversation with them as to exactly how we are breaking our umbilical cord with them, if you will. And, yeah, some of it is sour grapes. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit upset. Not that I can do anything about it. But I'm a little bit upset that they would send a letter out like that without even letting us know. And as a matter of fact, as an administrative group, we didn't get the letter. Who got the letter was other participants of the other facets who originally went into New York 44. So, we have, we've been working with New York 44 as far as our break. You'll recall that our original plan was to offer to pay them two months premium. And upon the advice of our attorney, we originally went at this with the notion of one month. So, we have amended that. And we've said, we'll go for two months with it. There's no question that we're trying to, that what we wanted to do in terms of breaking away and moving to Exelus is, is not what is, the way to separate that they're suggesting in their MOA, the original memorandum of agreement. So, they're a little concerned about that. They're upset about that. And what we're trying to show them is that our run-out costs are going to be inconsequential for them when we've taken care of those two months of premium. So, yeah, some of it is sour grapes. Some of it is them not being necessarily happy with the way that we-- not being necessarily happy with the way that we want to separate from them. But to be quite honest, we're not happy with having a 20% increase in premium. And we're not happy about 18 months earlier having another large increase in premium. We're not happy about the notion that emergency room visits go from a $50 deductible to a $300 deductible. We're not happy about the notion that, and these are changes that they said were coming. We're also not happy about the fact that if you have a high-dollar prescription, a brand prescription, then no longer does it qualify for a straight fee of, I don't know, 15, 20, 25, whatever it may be, copay. But rather you have to pay the difference, the difference between what the copay pays and the actual cost of the drug. And you can imagine what that looks like. Now, we don't see that as being beneficial to any of our employees. Not to mention the fact that every one of their paychecks come September would go up at least 20% in premium. So, you know, we're still in negotiations with them, to be quite honest with you. They, yes, they wrote the letter and that's their tactic. And I feel that they have maybe successfully scared a few people because we have had some phone calls on it. But our attorney is working on it. I've actually put in, tried to make connection with the district superintendent over in Erie One, Bosse's, who is the managing group for that. And we've been playing a little bit of phone tag on that. But, you know, we're working our way through it. I'm not at a point of alarm, but I know it's an inconvenience for some folks at this time.
Well, and the fact that, like you pointed out, Graydon, it's not even on letterhead.
Right.
It does not look like a legit insurance document that you would receive. And to me, it looks very unprofessional.
Yeah, there is no letterhead on it.
Right.
No, I think my point of bringing it up is if there's confusion out there that they're trying to drive to our constituents, that we should at least have a statement to our constituents saying, you have double coverage, you have these things in place for this period of time to be able to address these things. And I think that's probably, all they want to do is clarify the confusion.
And Exelis did a wonderful job with getting the cards out so quickly.
They really did. And we did, last week, we did send a reminder out to staff about, you know, yes, Exelis is your primary, yes, you should use Exelis right now. We got verification that everything is okay with Exelis a couple of times. You know, that's the group that everybody should be using right now. And after our conversation last week, as I say, we sent another reminder out to everybody. And I spoke to Meg and our intention is to send a reminder out every two weeks to everybody between now and, you know, through the summer just so we can make sure that everybody's getting into the habit of using our Exelis plan.
We should kind of do a, we should reach out to retirees.
Right, because they're...
Because they would be missed by the...
Right, they weren't part of the negotiating units that negotiated the new Exelis, so.
Which, now if they had questions, they wouldn't have any information. They wouldn't have got, they wouldn't have had those updates. If they had those updates, they probably wouldn't be asking.
But yeah, I thought Exelis did a wonderful job getting those cards out and I've already used mine.
They were great, they truly were. And we actually, they had asked for a two-month window to make that happen. And we gave them, instead of eight weeks, two months, we gave them about six weeks with our voting and all that stuff that had to go on. And they were, they were right there, they had it all.
So, good, thank you.
All right, so we have a need to go into executive session for a matter relating to a particular employee.
And matter related...